Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's March twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty five. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of the people's land, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There's an ongoing address. Great, well, welcome everyone. Moving down through the agenda, approval of the agenda is the first item this evening.
Uh, move to approve the agenda for this evening. Yes, thank you.
Sherman? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host?
Aye. Aye.
I could have done that.
Hi, Mary Beth.
Hi, I just realized that you may not know it's me, but I had to call in from my phone.
Okay.
We heard your lovely voice, Mary Beth, and we knew that it was you.
Ah.
So everyone, everyone in attendance can vote.
One, two, three, four, go.
Um, new business, we don't really have any. Uh, we are waiting to connect with Kevin Brown, the town attorney, uh, coming up in a few minutes. And will, that's part of old business, so we'll skip over that. That's a discussion of the draft subdivision ordinance.
Yep. Do, do you want any update before, while we're waiting for Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, once again, uh, Bill and Norman and I, uh, met two days ago, uh, to continue our work on the subdivision regulations, and we have now completed the section four. And that leaves us, and we started section two. Section two is the final section that we need to review, uh, for the task that the, the planning commission gave the subcommittee. Um, so, um, we, uh, took some notes on section, on two point O, uh, one of the first sections, oh, one, I believe. Uh, and we're focusing on, uh, cultural features. We thought that it would be helpful to have a cultural, uh, features map, and that we will need to cross-reference any language that we put in, uh, this section of the, um, subdivision regulations with the town plan and have similar language in the town plan, both of which will reference, uh, state statutes. Uh, that was one of the recommendations that Kevin, uh, gave us in his, uh, letter back in September.
What are cultural features exactly?
So glad you asked. Uh, we did a little bit of Google searching, and, um, cultural features can be buildings, structures, places of worship, cemeteries. And here in the town, it could even be something like the polo fields, something that has cultural, uh, value and historical, uh, significance. It could be a fairgrounds, like in Rutland City, that could be a cultural feature, uh, religious institutions, the water tower up on north, uh, Main Street, could be a cultural feature since it's been there for a long time. Um, the railroad museum, we also mentioned that, uh, down here, that can be a cultural. Yep, Pine Hill Park, exactly. Um, and state historic, historic preservation sites.
So how does this relate to subdivisions?
Uh, because there is a specific reference in the subdivision regs, which actually is, uh, a reference back to state statute, and the state statute says that planning, uh, the, the subdivision regulations must include those in terms of how it's regulated. So when you're making a determination about a subdivision, that has to be taken into consideration as to whether, uh, or how, and whether, uh, that area or parcels can be subdivided. So it provides local communities the opportunity to have some say about, um, the subdivision of lands.
So if, if a location makes it on that list, it cannot be subdivided?
Uh, that's not, I don't think the, uh, conclusion, but that we have some, um, authority over which, how, how to regulate the, uh,
Wasn't prohibitive, but it was something that has to be taken into consideration.
Right. And so for the preservation of those cultural features, uh, something, there might have to be a mitigation measure, uh, to some extent like screenings as we have in our, um,
Energy plan.
Energy plan and also in the, um, view shed, um, um, uh, what is it, section of the, um, municipal plan. So. Anyway, it gives the municipality, uh, latitude in, um, providing some
Which really about, if I may.
Yeah, let me finish my thought, uh, providing some consistency and some, uh, well-refined expectations about, uh, what's needed to preserve those cultural features.
I was, I was just gonna say, it, it protects, it, it it seems to provide that the planning commission is considering that, and where these calls are, and, uh, gives consideration to their protection and preservation. Um, and it's not any more specific than that. But, you know, at first I think both of us were a little puzzled, and as we dug into it with Bill, you know, it did seem to make sense. You know?
So I wrote down the section that, that's just one of the things.
Section one's the only thing left to do?
No, 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 section two is the only section left to do.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, looked at section two point O one, and, uh, we made some suggestions around wording, uh, later in a subsequent section, I think. Um, we'll be picking up with two point O two and two point O three, uh, but on page seven, uh, Kevin Brown, uh, made some notes, and we are making a recommendation to the planning commission to change the wording from sketch plan to preliminary plat. And the reason is because a sketch plan is very, um, ambiguous, whereas a preliminary plat, uh, has some, uh, consistent, uh, expectations for all submissions.
There's no standards for, uh,
There are no standards.
For a sketch plan, there's no.
As Bill said, you know, you could take a crayon and, and put it on a piece of paper and submit that, which might not tell us anything. So whereas a preliminary plat has some more consistent, uh, features and requirements that would allow us to make more informed decisions as well as asking any probing questions. I think we've had some history with good sketch plans and, uh, less than good sketch plans.
Does a plat mean that's something that, I, I, the language, does that mean it's something that's developed by a, uh, Surveyor?
I don't think it ha- has to be, or does it, Bill?
Well, that's, that's typically where it would come from, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I don't, I think we need to talk that through. I don't, I don't think somebody should have to go to that to, to see if we have a preliminary.
What?
Yeah, I, I just think it's a lot of money that maybe somebody doesn't want to spend to get to that point, and that's, but I'm more than, you know.
Yeah, we can talk about, that was just a, a recommendation that our small committee came up with.
Yeah.
As a result of some other, uh, ambiguities in Kevin's recommendation, so.
Hmm.
But that, that's all for discussion.
Yeah.
That hasn't, that, we're not making a, a, a change without, uh, conversation as a planning.
Okay, so what, what are your, your next moves?
Well, our next moves are to schedule a, uh, a follow-up meeting. Uh, once we hear what Kevin might have to say to recommend to us tonight, so that we can be, uh, more focused on the, uh, specific areas that we need to pay attention to. And so we did not set, we met on Tuesday, we did not set a follow-up meeting, which we've done every time since, but we knew that we were having this meeting tonight, and felt that it was best to wait until we had more specific, um, information, and then we'll take some time at the end of this meeting, just to, uh, set our next, which will probably between now and our next planning commission meeting. It has, it's been that way, we work every, you know, week, week to ten, uh, you know, week or two weeks to ten days, something like that. Ten days to two.
How up to speed is Kevin on, on your work?
Uh, Bill has been providing Kevin with a series of questions when we haven't adopted his language or recommendation, um, uh, directly. So what we usually do is we check off, uh, saying that we've either stricken something that Kevin said we should strike, or we've included language that Kevin has, uh, recommended. Where there is something open for interpretation, we'll be bringing that back to you. So those things Kevin might know, but might not know, but I can't think of more than a handful of items like that at this point in time. So. Yeah, it's not a lot. And some of those are either minor, or they have to have, uh, a discussion like this one. So this is one type of, uh, of, uh, identified area that we need to bring back to the, to the planning commission for discussion.
Any questions to the group?
We've done a lot of cross-referencing with other documents that we have, including, uh, eighteen forty-four, is that right? Forty-four eighteen?
Forty-four eighteen.
Forty-four eighteen of the statutes, we go and reference that quite frequently, because that's the statutory reference that Kevin, uh, has highlighted for many of his comments. So we're going to make sure, we go back and make sure that whatever we are suggesting is consistent with that statute. And Kevin's recommendations usually come directly out of that statutory reference. So it's just to inform ourselves about, um, what we will eventually tell you. And last time we were talking a little bit about how we'll make that presentation, so.
To, to the commission, right.
To this group, and the whole, group as a whole.
Yeah. And it's likely to be a, a document that we are putting before you for your review comments. And then, uh, we will do some references back to either Kevin's, um, document or, uh, to something that was in the original clean draft that Bill sent out. That way, if somebody wants to see what the language was, you can pull that up and look at it. Uh, but otherwise, we're not going to expect people to go through and read that, and Kevin's, and this new document. So we'll focus all of the, uh, discussion on the new document with references back to the other, um.
The ones. Well, basically, well, whatever new document we come up with will be cross-referenced to Kevin's letter, so you can see where we're coming from, and you'll also, you may need to go back and get the existing subdivision regulations to read along with it.
Um, and if there are references to the, uh, municipal plan, then we will also reference those page numbers, and if language needs to appear in the municipal plan, as Kevin has suggested a couple of times, then that new language would be recommended, even though the municipal plan is not being amended at this point in time.
Soon.
Right.
Ten years.
But in terms of the, the, um, in terms of the chronology, we're not necessarily expecting that the plan, the municipal plan will be updated before we adopt the language that will reference the plan. And then the plan would, when reexamined, will include that, uh, that language, so that we're not.
You mean, we change, have to go back in and change the?
The town plan, the municipal plan.
Right, but if you're referencing it in the, in the subdivision, if you're referencing pages in the town plan.
I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
No, we haven't. Or maybe sections instead of pages.
Section, right, as referenced in the section, because there are some sections in the municipal plan that do not have the required language to support the subdivision regulations that Kevin has recommended.
How big of a problem is that?
Right now, it's, it's fairly simple, it's a question of adding about a half dozen words that we've seen.
So amending the town, the municipal plan?
Amending the municipal plan to include those references, so that what the, um, the subdivision regulations include are supported by the language in the municipal plan. Because the statutes reference municipal plans as one of the areas of authority for the subdivision regulations. Yes, it's a headache. Norman has told us on more than one occasion that it's a headache. That it's a headache. I, I saw the, I saw the look on Sherman's face when I, uh, finished my comment about, um, referencing the municipal plan, and, uh, it looked pained, and I'm just assuring him that you and I have had similar.
Yeah, we feel your pain.
We feel your pain.
It, it is, it is a uphill climb. And, um, Bill and Dana are to be commended for the work and the overall comprehension of what's going on and, um, and what is required, but I think in a sense, it may be a circular problem if we, uh, make references to the town plan, and the town plan is changed, then we have to come back to subdivision regulations. Like, but if we wait, then it doesn't, so it's, it's a circular situation, it's probably just an ongoing.
Yeah, but the, the town plan continually gets changed, it's, it's up to eight years now.
Yes.
So. It's kind of an ongoing.
We'll just have to keep an eye on it, that if it is changed and it doesn't, and something's changed that will impact the subdivision regulations, we'll need to, you know, to think about that, either as we go along, or after it's done, we're gonna have to.
And Kevin may have suggestions about how we can do that more.
Yeah.
Seamlessly.
And, and the next, the next round of revisions will be our suggestion that Sherman and Howard and somebody else. Jerry, uh, do it.
And Norman's ready to draft just about anybody at this point.
I'm sorry?
I said you're ready to draft just about anybody at this point.
Okay, well, while we're waiting for the town attorney, um, let's skip, um, down to, um, River Corridor ordinance, which I didn't have a chance to get to Kyle, um, our, our questions and such, but Norm, thank you for your new set of comments.
Welcome.
And hopefully, um, depending on what goes on with the subdivision ordinance, um, hopefully we'll have more to work with, with River Corridor ordinance at our next meeting. Um, down to announcements, um, the grant proposal we put in for the Pocket Park didn't make it. So we'll start from scratch there.
That's too bad.
Yeah, they were concerned about, um, ADA access, it was too limited. They've always been concerned about it being so close to the river. Um, yeah, and I think there was, um, I think there was some, some good competition for that grant. Um, something that was brought to the select board's attention, uh, the other night, earlier this week, is, um, a tri-town trail. It's a shared use trail that, uh, Pittsford and Proctor and West Rutland are planning. They initially didn't think it would go, uh, through town, Rutland town land, but then they, um, they had three options, and they actually didn't like the three that they were working with, so they came up with a fourth, which brings it down the West Proctor Road for a section. And so they were just letting, uh, the select board know about that, that they were going to go for a scoping study, a preliminary design study, uh, most likely for that fourth option. And it was, uh, amusing that the select board thought that maybe the title should be changed now. Four towns. I'm not quite sure what you would call it, but.
Quad trail, the, the quad town, right?
Um, hi guys. Uh,
Yeah.
I was gonna wait till the, the end to give kind of an update, but, uh, the Bellemont Trail is, um, starting to move forward, they have staff working on finding the exact route, so we started working with them. Um, but that is one of the areas that they were talking about using for the Bellemont Trail, too, that, um, the Fort Town Trail. Um, potentially would be part of, uh, the larger trail.
Okay. Are they working with, um, pretty much Judy Frazier, the Proctor Town Manager, is, is steering this? Initiative, or are they talking to her?
Um, we haven't talked to her, we've been talking with Marion Goulet of West Rutland.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, um, because we're looking at, um, a couple of different options also, so, but, you know, we may end up using that, or there may be a different route, but yeah, definitely a good, uh, you know, we'll be involved with them.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and it'd be great if Rutland Town, um, yeah, participated, and I'd be happy to be a contact with that.
And the option they're looking at now, um, is not off West, uh, West Proctor Road. It goes, it will be part of the, you know, part of the road. Yeah.
Oh?
Yeah. Yeah. It will, yeah, it'll be a trail, it'll be off, you know, off-highway trail, coming down from Pittsford, um, somewhat near the town farm, um, and then crossing over, and then to get to Business Route Four into West Rutland, you, they're looking at the West Proctor Road, but it would be on the shoulder and that stretch.
You don't want shoulder on that. Would that be an expansion, or, or, or they, would widen it? There's no shoulder there now.
Yeah. I guess to be determined and, and, you know, appropriate marking, at very least.
They'd need it, yeah.
Yeah.
A bike lane.
How much of the West Proctor Road, the whole thing in Rutland Town?
No. No, part of it is in Proctor.
Part of it is in Proctor and only.
Three quarters of it is in Proctor, probably, because it goes all the way up to the little castle here from Proctor.
Yeah, and, and it would come onto the road near the castle, is my understanding.
From.
From an, an off.
From the west.
From the west.
Okay. West, you got the river on one side, and I can't imagine where they're going with it, but they must have a.
Yeah.
Let's go biking home when the weather gets warmer, how's that?
And Mary Beth, that's probably not what the Bellemont, what you, Bellemont folks are thinking of, you know, on-road section?
So it's most likely going to be a mix. Um, we're pretty much in all parts of, it's gonna go through Rutland Town twice, because we're, you know, going in through ideally Northwood Park, and then picking up, um, on the sidewalk and the bike path going into the city, um, but they're expecting to have some sections that follow roads, but, um, ideally it would be off of the road or separated from the road. Um, so it's still early stages, but they're looking at having, kind of like with that trail plan, having three or four different options for routes, and they'll kind of pursue them and see which one ends up being the best, um, as far as like hand donors and, yeah.
Uh, given that it would be coming through Northwood, right? Is that what we had said before?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, how, how, and we come down, it was basically down Post Road, I mean, I'm not gonna say it right on Post Road, but down, down that way, crossing over, uh, Route Seven, because there was a plan at some point to cross over Route Seven to get into the city? Is that right? Is that still correct?
Correct.
So where, where does it, where does it join Proctor then?
So it would, the trail most likely would go to, um, Pine Hill, well, it's gonna go to Pine Hill Park, so.
Yep.
Uh, they're gonna, there's gonna be a route between Northwood Park and Pine Hill Park, and then from Pine Hill Park. Um, but, you know, there's another option. Ideally, people wouldn't be going through a city on the city roads, or that would be an option, but ideally there would also be a trail option, which would be north of town, and then that would be what would connect over. Um, so it's one of the potential options, but.
So let, Mary Beth, let me, let me explain something, so, uh, that would be the southern route that went towards, um, Pine Hill Park. You're saying that there's a northern route then that would cross over like around McKinley, run into the town, and then what, cross over, go down Stevens Road, and then into Proctor, or what? Because I don't see a whole lot of.
Isn't there a trail from Pine, Pine Hill Park right into Proctor?
There's a hiking.
There's a hiking trail, it's the old carriage trail.
So it could be.
Could be that, though.
I thought they used that as biking, but you guys are no better than me, I don't.
Yeah, no, it's, it, I don't, I've hiked it.
Well, it's like part of the mountain biking, you know, kind of a rougher, um, you know, not a bike path, but, you know, it's like, the carriage trail is kind of like the trails at Pine Hill Park for mountain biking, but also people hike on it, and.
It's very rough. Rail there is very rough. And sometimes you can't, it's steep, and you can't always see, I mean, that would require a significant amount of trail development, I think. Uh, when my wife and I and my family, uh, did, did a couple of hikes up there, it's not easy, and it's, it's a, it's a flea haven as well, a, a very heavily infested.
Dicks and fleas?
Fleas and ticks, uh, ticks is what I meant, tick haven. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's overgrown, it would have to be, um, manicured significantly.
It is a mountain biking trail. I mean, the whole, the whole thing, the.
I never saw anybody biking on that trail.
I have biked it.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
On, on the carriage trail?
Yeah.
The whole thing?
Well, yeah, just, just to get to the top is the hard part, yeah, the other side is.
Well, I mean, yeah.
I, I went to the top and, and then headed north.
You went to the top from, uh, the Pine Hill side?
Yeah, from Georgiety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's easier than the Proctor side, but that's.
Mary Beth?
Oh, yeah?
Did you have something to add?
Oh, sorry, what'd you say?
Just wondering if you had something to add, I didn't know if you were trying to interject.
Oh, no, um, oh, I was just saying that was cool that, that Sherman is running on and bike, I've run it a couple of times. I used to do a leaf chase ten K there, but I haven't ridden on it, but that's cool. Um, well, so, you know, there, we talked about potential routes, we just had an initial conversation, I think it was Tuesday, um, with people that work for the Bellemont now and are the project managers, and then Shelley Lust and I. So there, there isn't anything set in stone, but saying roughly north. Um, we don't know about using, like, the carriage trail in particular, but, um, in some way it'll be connected, even if we don't, the Bellemont isn't on that tri or quad town trail. It'll still connect to it, because it's going through Pine Hill Park, and then we're ultimately going through West Rutland and, um, down to Fleet Valley Trails in Polton, it's kind of the general flow, but, um, we're looking at kind of several different options, so.
Now it'd connect to the rail trail there, going over to Polton, through Castleton?
Hopefully, that's a tough part, um, might.
What do you mean that's a?
So the Bird Mountain Wildlife Management Area is a very sensitive area, and the state does not want a trail going through there. So, um, we'd have to go on one side or the other of that, so either through Castleton or like up in the mountains, kind of behind West Rutland. or like up in the mountains, kind of behind West Rutland, you know?
The Sleet Valley Trails don't, I, Mary, uh, Mary Beth could, the Sleet Valley Trails don't connect to the rail trail.
Oh, okay.
So I think, am I right, Mary Beth?
Yeah, they don't, I don't think they directly connect. They're kind of, they're both in Pulteney, but it's like different parts of Pulteney, so they're gonna, um I think what it's gonna end up being is probably like a couple of different routes, because there's um, the like flatter bike path type of um route that it will take probably a lot longer in in some areas, you know, connecting to the rail trail. And probably what would happen in the um to begin with is there's like kind of a mountainous, rougher route. Um, just because that, um, so I think ultimately there may end up being two different routes or move from one to the other. Um, it's a huge, yeah, it's a huge project with a ton of landowners, so it's still, still early stages other than roughly the towns, but we want to go to and connecting the dots of those big um mountain biking running destinations.
Mary Beth, do you have um, or can you give me a sense of how uh how the trail would go from West Rutland to Castleton?
So, um, it would be awesome if, so there are vast trails right now, like when, when I was meeting up with you guys, we were talking about vast trails. There are some existing, but it's different because it would be used all year round instead of just the snow, so, um, but wherever we can overlap with that, you know, work with the same landowners that are already used to having a trail, that would be great. There's the old Funkhauser Trolley Line, but unfortunately, it's all privately owned now. Um, that goes kind of parallel to the railroad along Four A. Um, a lot of the areas are wet, so we, you know, but we could do boardwalks. Um, so that was one idea that we had, just because it's pretty flat. Um, but would require a lot of planning.
And so right now, there is no specific outline of a trail going from West Rutland to Castleton. Is that correct? There's no I, concrete idea on the table for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's like, uh, people would like to see it happen, but there aren't still, yeah, very early, just like idea stage, you know?
Right. And nothing specific, because anything that would go through Castleton into, excuse me, anything who go through West Rutland into Castleton would cost multiple landowners' properties.
Right, yeah, and yeah, no landowner outreach has been done yet or or anything, so these are just like very, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Sounds exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone. Uh, any word, Bill? Okay. Um.
Well.
Also, at the select board meeting the other night, the Cortina came up again. And the um state is thinking about letting it open up again?
They, they were supposed to have a follow-up inspection. And we, we don't know if that's happened or if it has, what the results of that was.
Results of, I'm sorry, I was
The Cortina was, had, needed to have a follow-up inspection before they could reopen. We don't know if that's been done or if it was what the result was. So we did get a, we did get a letter after the fact last time, but we haven't heard anything from them.
Okay. If it were to um it, to be opened again, if that was allowed, uh, how would that mesh with the voucher program going forward?
Well, the, the winter one is ending
April first.
Yeah, like a couple days, so it would be, I, we don't know, but we don't know. Like, we, we don't know if they're gonna, because it is optional for them to accept the vouchers. So we don't know if they're gonna try accepting them again or not, what the plan is, so in the building, they've been sitting since December without really anybody in it, so.
Yeah.
It's not, hmm, never mind. Keep my comment.
Yeah, I, I haven't noticed that there's been much activity there as far as remedying some of the problems and
Police Department has noticed the lack of people in that end of town.
The lack of what?
People.
There.
Yes.
Of any type, the, um, the management and
There, there have been less problems down there in the last couple of months than they've had in the past, so.
Right. Right. Okay. Any other announcements? Yeah, we've got the minutes.
I shall do.
I just have a question. I just have a question. What's uh, at one point, something came to my attention about folks camping out behind the old mall? Is that problematic, still problematic, or?
Uh, that'd be probably a question for Ed or Ted at the Police Department, but I don't know.
I just kind of heard serendipitously.
There's, there's more than one encampment.
Yeah, okay, okay.
On the one on the other side of Route Seven, too.
By feral in that area or?
And a, and of a
Ranberry.
Ranberry.
Pretty sizable ones?
Look, you can see it from the, you can see it from Route Four when you drive over.
By the railroad tracks, oh.
Yeah, yeah, looked at. And it usually has a way of growing as the weather warms. It's, it gets pretty big, looks like.
So when the, the winter voucher program ends, uh, some of those people will be looking for so- someplace to stay or or another hotel.
Yep, but the, the voucher program limited the number of days in a year that a person could be eligible for, but those days were separate from the cold weather program, so that was, what, December first through March thirty-first, those four months? Didn't count toward those days, so.
It's like a hundred and eighty days or something like that.
It's eighty days on the, on the non-winter month.
Right.
Um, usage for a voucher.
So separate from those the cold winter months.
Right. So they essentially get another set of vouchers, right?
See, though, but Rut, Rut, they, the, the, we, we did get a letter from, but a general letter from DCF saying the program's ending. It did go over like the, the numbers of people assistance in each area and Rutland had the most.
Is, is there a- any coordination at any level for addressing the root cause of the camping? And is there a vision for how to graduate people from that type of lodging to more conventional?
We have not been approached by landowners nor the state for any discussions on anything.
So as far as the town is concerned, the answer would be no. It doesn't mean the city is taking some.
Uh, yeah, I, I, right, I understand that, but.
Um, but no, we have not been approached by public or private entities about looking at solutions. We didn't even know the inspections were, the follow-up inspection happened with Cortina, like we weren't in, involved in that at all, so it's
The letter you received said it had been done?
The letter, look, when we got, we had to ask for the report for the Cortina. The one that was sent, it was like late Tuesday uh, that said the program's coming to an end and here's the counts in the areas, it was just counted out to all the different towns. Um, it was just a more of a general advisory letter about program coming to an end and here's how many are in, on the program in each area, so.
Do, do we have, does town have any representation um on any of the committees that are being formed in the city in respect to?
I thought there was.
I know, I know there's been discussions, but we haven't been, I mean, there, there's no board members that I'm aware of that are part of that or nobody's been asked, and we don't there's limited people in town that would be appropriate to put on that kind of committee and
Well, I think maybe the discussion was the health officer should be on that and whether it happened or not.
I, I will tell you that he is not on it right now. Cause he's not, he's not, he's
The reason that I ask is that, I mean, when you're drawing maps, uh, migration patterns, do not respect um, um, the- theoretical, non-concrete boundaries. And I think it would be in the town's interest to have, have somebody participate in those talks and planning so that we might learn from our neighbors and perhaps um, tag team with them to come up with solutions.
I don't think there's opposition to participating. I don't know if we're, if we should be waiting to be invited or if we should be proactive and knock on the door, but there, to, to my knowledge, there have not been discussions on that yet.
They may be revived, depending on what happens here.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know.
Okay, um, so if, um, get the minutes, get to the minutes of
Go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, well, just before we do that, since it looks like we're gonna not connect with Kevin, um, what, what should our next steps be there? Um.
Set it up again.
I
You think so? You think?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll try again. I've, I've sent messages and phone calls and, and that, but he's not
He shows up at seven thirty for some reason.
No, no, I did, no.
I'm sorry.
No, I, we're, we're not connected to him tonight, so it's just, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on, but uh, we'll, we'll try again.
It won't be a moot point in three weeks. I mean, we have finished all your
There, there were some things he talked to me about that if you'd like, we could go into executive session because it's, it's advice from counsel and I, I have that, so it's not a lot, but it's, it's
You have what? I'm sorry?
Advice from him.
On
To share with us.
To share with you. So
That he thinks should be done in executive session.
That is permissible for executive session for advice from counsel, yes.
Right. So we need to hear that, so let's try again in three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Reschedule, Kevin.
Yep.
When's the next meeting?
Three weeks.
April seventeenth.
I'm sorry?
April seventeenth.
Okay, Jerry.
I can't wait. I was just suggesting it. I wasn't here, so it doesn't
Go ahead, you can make the motion.
Right. Motion, a motion that we accept the minutes from uh March sixth, that's written.
Second.
Okay, move second and any discussion?
Um, I just wanted to uh see if you guys knew. I heard recently that you don't actually need to have attended the meeting in order to vote on the minutes. You just have to have read them? And I was wondering if you guys, what you guys thought about that?
I don't know about that.
Mary Beth, that's something I've been advocating for since we drafted our rules of procedure. And I'm not gonna say anything further on that or
I didn't know if it opened up a can of worms. I just thought it was interesting, you know? Um, normally it doesn't matter, but we have had it before where, you know, it's been um
Yeah, we've had to delay the vote a meeting or something or two.
Or three or, yeah, a month or more.
Well, anyway, I wasn't there, so I'll, I'll abstain for now, but I just thought
Yeah, I think that's the normal practice or what's done in most cases. It only seems fair. Only seems fair, I mean, uh, you wouldn't be voting as something you didn't attend. You didn't know what had happened.
Unless you read the minutes or what? That's okay.
Times a minute, so don't, don't reflect every, I mean, they reflect, I don't know. I, I mean, they do, but they don't, they don't kind of give you the feeling of what the meeting was all about. It's just an opinion.
No emotion.
Yeah, no emotion.
No, no. No indication of what, what people were leaning.
Right. Uh, like a nasty look on my face about something, you know, that's actually
There's always there.
Yeah. Good boy.
You guys are gonna speak up because uh Norman can't hear you.
I don't think they won't, would really want to.
No. Better left on
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second, yes, to approve the minutes for March sixth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstained?
Oh, gimme.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause here? Okay.
Would you like another motion?
Yeah.
adjourned. Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.